CNN Special Meeting of the Council. All right, next we'll call the Special Public Meeting of the Glendale City Council, September 18th, 2012. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmembers Friedman.
Here.
Manukian.
Here.
Majarian.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
And Mayor Quintero.
Here. Your report.
The agenda for the September 18th, 2012 Special Public Meeting of the City Council was posted on Thursday, September 13, 2012, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Hey, could you do the number one public hearing, please?
Item one is a public hearing. Director of Community Development continued from September 11 regarding proposed Brandon-Wilson project to be located at 124 West Wilson Avenue. At 1A is a motion approving stage two design review, subject to comments and conditions of approval, and 1B is a motion approving creative signage, subject to comments and conditions of approval.
Mr. Ochoa.
Yes, sir. Here again, we have a project, a private equity deal in the downtown, taking advantage of the downtown specific plan. You have seen this project before in the stage one design review. Now we have stage two, and again, as was noted, we're looking at the creative signage to really make a pop at this, the ground zero of downtown Glendale. So Roger Kiesel, you want to take us through?
Right. Good afternoon, Mayor Quintero, members of the State Council. Roger Kiesel with the Planning Division. Holland Partner Group is requesting approval of stage two design, as well as creative sign for the Brandon-Wilson project that they're proposing at 124 West Wilson Avenue. Just as a refresher, the site is currently vacant. It's 60,000 square feet approximately, and located on the southwest corner of Bran Boulevard and Wilson. The project will have 235 multifamily residential units and just under 10,000 square feet of commercial space. The majority of the 361 parking spaces are located in two subterranean levels of parking. There is parking at the ground level, as well as a mezzanine level. A vehicular access from Orange Street is exclusively for the residential units. There's also a driveway located off Wilson. The building is six stories high and is approximately 90, or six stories and approximately 90 feet in height. You all approved the stage one design on May 29th of this year with one condition and several considerations. The condition at that time was to modify the design of the project to meet DSP square footage requirements for open space. The stage two design has been modified, increasing the open space at the ground level, as well as expanding the green roof and adding a roof, another roof deck. And with those changes, the project does comply with open space requirements of the DSP. There also were other changes to the project to address several of the considerations you all had. The creative sign, which spells out the street names, is located right at the corner of Brandon-Wilson and complies with the design standards for creative signs contained in the zoning ordinance. Staff is recommending approval of stage two design for the project, as well as the creative sign, with no conditions. If you don't have any questions of me, I'll turn it over to Tom Warren of the Development Group, Holland Parker.
Are you adding any density to your project?
It's actually been reduced by three units.
Very good.
Hello, Mayor Quintero, members of the Council. Glad to be up here again, and I have to say that, to this date, I'm having a very enjoyable experience in the city of Glendale. I really appreciate the vision that Mr. Ochoa is bringing to your town, and across the board, the staff has been helpful, well-intentioned, detail-oriented, but willing to work through any challenges to come up with the best solution that we can come up collectively. Since the last hearing, we've been working hard, and it's, looking at the project, there's not a lot different. We think we were given some direction, that the project was generally looked at favorably, and we've stuck with it, but there have been a lot of fine points that have been ironed out. We were, we had to work out some fire department access along, between the two buildings, between us and city center west. We had to work out access along the, what is actually a private plaza, to keep pedestrians, to keep the egress on our site, and clear of openings, and meet all kinds of specifics of the fire code. But we have successfully worked through those things and are here today with a project that is fully compliant with all of your codes, with the specific plan, with building and fire as interpreted by your building official and fire marshal. And we are glad that, we really appreciate the work that everybody has put in to address these issues up front. As you know, the original proposal was for two high-rise towers, one 20 stories, the other 18, 356 total dwelling units, and what we're proposing is 235. It's a seven-story building with less density than the prior project, less floor area. There's full parking per your requirements, but it's still less traffic than was generated by the prior project. As I said, we've spent a considerable amount of time working on the design with the planning staff, with Roger Kiesel, with Alan, and with Mark Berry, and we think we've made some subtle improvements. Overall, we're very pleased with the design. It's been well-received with all of the, I mean, just about everyone we've showed it to, so that's satisfying to us, and a bit surprising, because it's, it is a, I think it is a fresh design for Glendale, and I do applaud the city for embracing this kind of building, not just here, but your own City Hall and other examples. As, you know, as such, we're very pleased with it. We don't, we think we've settled on a very nice building, and we don't want to change it from what we've proposed here today. A couple of things we've managed to incorporate into this is, we've studied the energy codes for Glendale and the, for California, and what we've decided to do on this project is increase our threshold to a lead silver standard, and I wanted to just make sure you guys are aware of that. We're excited about building in Glendale. We plan to incorporate charging stations and a zip car in the project. And what I think you all recognize, and we've talked about quite a bit, is that this project will fill a hole in downtown Glendale. It's on a vacant lot, which is conspicuously undeveloped in the middle of your core, mid-brand Boulevard. By approving this project and bringing these additional residents to the neighborhood, I think it will really revitalize Brand. Some of the shops along mid-brand, between Wilson and the CBD, could really use a little extra patronage, and I think that these, you know, 400, 450 residents that we expect to occupy this building will do a lot of good there. In anticipation of this approval, we have done, we've invested in full foundation permits, the permit drawings. Those are ready to be submitted, subject to our approval here, and our plan is to move forward as quickly as we can and start construction here in late November or early December. So we have our financing lined up. It's waiting on this hearing, and we expect to close on the land in 10 days and start the proceedings to get going with construction as quickly as we can. One other element of the building that I think we touched on earlier, of course, is that we're designing 10,000, or nearly 10,000 square feet of retail, commercial space right on Brand. This will be 17 feet high. It'll be designed to accommodate a high-end, well-known restaurant. We haven't really delved into that, subject to approval here and moving the project forward, but we'd like to see something like a Border Grill, Yard House, a, the farm at Beverly Hills, something of that quality.
Houston's.
Houston's. Something of that quality, I mean, certainly. And in order to get those kind of national tenants, you really have to design the space carefully, the high ceilings, grease interceptor, grease waste, trash removal, all that stuff is incorporated in the design, and that's one of the things we've spent time over the last several months perfecting. So we really look forward to bringing that into this location, and that's a big part of our proposal here. So, you know, in addition to filling this conspicuously vacant site, we are paying, which will help the economic development, we are paying over $4 million in impact fees to the city. There's $1 million in building permit fees, which go directly to support your staff time. There's $675,000 in school fees, $400,000 in art fees, and 1.7 million to parks and library. So as soon as we are able to pull our building permit and those fees are due, we'll be paying those and moving forward. Again, I do, I've really enjoyed my experience here in Glendale. I enjoy working with your staff. Everyone we've met is genuine and is really well-meaning in their comments. It's, I mean, it's been great. So with that, I'd like to turn this over to our architect to give you a few updates on the plans and some of the specifics we've worked on. Thank you.
Thank you. My name again is Mike Labarre. I'm with Carrier Johnson Architects, and I'm going to very briefly walk you through the overall concept. Once again, it hasn't changed from last time, the overall concept. We've made, as you heard, some minor refinements as a result of our ongoing good work with your urban design staff, building department, and fire department. We've interacted with all of them. A couple of the areas that have changed, though, were window placements and the treatment of the base of the building at the plaza level here, relative to the property line that was in this location here. Going around the corner, you see the creative sign. One of the questions you're being asked to approve today is the creative sign at the corner of Brandon-Wilson. That's illustrated here in this rendering. The base of the building has a strong arcade, which is consistent with your downtown specific plan, is part of the specific plan. It's what will accommodate the retail and restaurant space and the opportunity for cafe seating to spill out onto the street. It's a dramatic landmark corner, also identified in the downtown specific plan. Part of the top of the building's character is also derived from the fact that the top units are two-story loft units, and hence the difference at the top versus the middle part of the building. We've also spent a lot of time continuing to study the color of the building, and we know in our stage one conversation with you, color was important. I wanted to say today that I have continued to look at the color and feel that we have used the color in the right way to emphasize special features of the building and the architecture, and we like the color that we have. We feel it's the right solution for this building in this location. And color is fun. It's energetic, and it's exciting, and it's appropriate. This is the corner at Orange and Wilson, and the arcade feature changes at the corner here, where we also have another pocket plaza located on the base of the building. And a little bit of change further at the top, as a result of your comments at the last meeting. So overall, the concept has the buildings at the retail and restaurant space on the ground floor at the corner, entrance off of Wilson, and also off of Orange, with townhomes along the street as well, landscaped courtyards, a green roof at the top of the building that's substantial, so that the adjacent office building looks down on something interesting and colorful also.
While you have this slide up, I have a question. One concern I have with the, it's not your side plan issue, it's actually the other buildings, but that escalator that comes down.
Yes.
What happens kind of on the left side there underneath? Because it just seems like a really great place for people to sleep and camp out.
Is it over here?
Yeah, kind of under there. How are you dealing with that space?
There's glass over in this area located here, and we have open space and entry doors to our facility located there.
So there are doors there? It's not just a sort of a dead corner?
Yes. So we have, part of our fitness center is located down in here, and there's, this is actually kind of a mezzanine level shown here, but there's actually doors down in this location, and you can actually get in and out from the plaza into the project and to our lobby from that side.
Good. I'm glad that it's treated in some way, that it's not just a, you know, a wall there. That would be a problem.
Yeah, and let me add, too, that the access Mike pointed out is the primary access from the retail parking to the retail. Will have an opening, at least light and air, light showing through there, so that when people park in the retail parking, they'll see this, that's where I go, and that's going to be the most natural path out to the retail. So we will have quite a bit of traffic through that area. The gym, like you said, is all glass. And then between our building and the city center one, we have reached agreement with Legacy to put a wall there, so that it completes the plaza, and it'll be egress through it, but it won't flow through in between the two buildings, which would be problematic, so, and it'll be treated.
You're talking about a wall down here.
It's on the adjacent property, but it's a continuation of our wall visually to their building.
So I think we were on the green roof. I think I answered your question, and then just to sum up, that's the evening view along Wilson Avenue, looking at the open courtyard and the varied architecture that you get as a result of the different corners and their context within the community. Be happy to answer any questions.
Question? Will I hear? Okay. Is there someone else? Okay, I have a card from Alisa Esmarion.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor Quintero, City Council members and staff. My name is Alisa Esmarion. I am the president of the Armenian American Chamber of Commerce, Greater Los Angeles Chapter. I'm here today to express my full support for the Brandon-Wilson project, both on behalf of the chamber and more on a personal level as a mid-brand Boulevard business owner. As you know, the Armenian American Chamber of Commerce is a nonprofit organization committed to serving the needs of the business community in the U.S. and abroad. We are an organization that encourages entrepreneurship and innovative business activity here within our wonderful city of Glendale and beyond. The project before you today embodies the goals of our organization. Over the last few months, we had the opportunity to learn about this project and get to know the Holland Partners. These 235 high-quality apartments, together with the ground-floor retail, are the missing link to connect the floor traffic and energy of Americana with the charming mid-brand retail corridor. I mean, it's eyesore, let's face it. For too many years, we stared at an unattractive vacant lot on our main Boulevard. Finally, a developer has presented a fresh, innovative project. This is the kind of project that will continue to transform our city and bring new energy to our downtown. The project achieves the goals without asking for any variances from the code relating to parking and any other city requirements. On a personal level, I am the business owner directly across from the street from this project. My restaurant favorite place welcomes the addition, with traffic and energy that will come with the new residents of this great community. For this reason, the Armenian American Chamber of Commerce, Greater Los Angeles Chapter, and I respectfully request your vote yes on the project. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Dennis Di Pietro, followed by Harvey Pearson.
Good afternoon, Mayor Quintero and City Council and staff. I'm here speaking on behalf of the Glendale Chamber of Commerce as its current chair of the board, representing the Board of Directors, who are representing our members. We support both the Holland Developers' Brandon-Wilson project and the upcoming Orange and Wilson projects, and ask, well, good business is always good in Glendale, and ask that today you approve motions 1A and 1B regarding the Brandon-Wilson stage two design and the creative signage, subject to the comments and conditions that Roger Kiesel already mentioned. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Harvey Pearson, followed by Herbert Milano.
Good afternoon, Mayor Quintero of the City Council. My name is Harvey Pearson from Los Feliz. In my comments on this proposed project, I could set a background that, I drive in almost every day from Los Feliz into Glendale, practically every day, and I used to come on Los Feliz Boulevard and then turn up Central Brand or other street, and then the Los Angeles approved a major project along Los Feliz, where Costco and Best Buy are. That created a lot of traffic, like people had said there was going to create a lot of traffic there. It made it not such a great drive anymore. So I started, I started going up north on the Golden State Freeway, sharing with all the huge mammoth big rigs and people driving crazy and right and left on the lanes, and then coming over, getting off on the Colorado Avenue overpass. Now I see where there's a 300-unit alliance development going up there. How many parking spaces is that? How many cars are going to come out of there, you know? It's like they keep the green covering over the exits and egress to the buildings till the last minute, then they pop it off, so you can't imagine all the flood of cars are going to be coming out, joining the traffic jam. It's already bad, it's going to be a lot worse. And then they put some more on Elk, to try and get off of Colorado Avenue and dogleg around through Elk. There's going to be more traffic jam there. I don't know what will happen in that. And then you see all the big developments and traffic congestion creating, going up all over the place, and this, the one that was up there about in San Fernando Road, it looks pretty, those slides and everything, boy, not that many cars, not that many people, not many, not that way, you know? It's going to be jammed, already is jammed. And so now, here's a nice little place in the middle of Glendale. Still hasn't got any construction going up on it yet, and I'll bet if they had a referendum on, you want that to be a park, ask constituents of Glendale whether you prefer there to be a park or another development, my guess is the referendum would be for a park. Well, I guess that would be about it. See you next Tuesday on the Smoking Ordinance. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Herbert Milano, you'll see him in the room. That's my final card. I'll close the public hearing. Comments or any questions?
No. Yes, I want to ask from the developer whether their construction costs have gone up considerably. I guess you don't want to ask that. Have construction costs, in your opinion, gone up?
They're certainly rising. They are definitely going up. I mean, one of the reasons we would like to move forward with this project is because it's critical to us to finish the plans, to buy out the project, to lock in our pricing so we can, we can, you know, complete this on budget. Costs are moving, definitely, and they will move further as the economy picks up here, which we are hoping it will.
Well, one of the speakers said you're not asking for any variances or anything from the city. Project is being built by right at this point, by what is allowed there by zoning codes?
Within the specific plan. It's all within the bounds and the requirements of the specific plan, the parking, the density, the height, all of it is compliant.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, let's have some comments and the motion, et cetera. Who's to go first?
I support the project. Would it be nice to have a park there? It'd be great to have a park there. This is probably one of the most expensive pieces of land in the city, given its location. I don't think it's realistic for us to buy that piece of land, particularly not now. I mean, I know we can't afford to buy it, but we would certainly get a larger piece of land if it wasn't right on Bran Boulevard, which I think would be a better service to the community. Personally, I'd rather wait and go one or two blocks away to someplace where the, what price of the land might be a little cheaper, and we could maybe build a larger park, all things considered. Terms of traffic, I don't think it's fair to compare Costco to a residential building. Big-box stores are always going to have a lot more traffic than residential buildings, and I would suggest to the speaker, and I don't mean this at all as an insult or a challenge, that if you're driving to Glendale every day and you don't like the traffic, move to Glendale. That's what this building's supposed to accomplish, to allow people to live close to where they work, so they don't have to take half an hour, 45-minute commutes. And I know from when I speak to people, particularly younger people, under the age of 40, that a lot of them don't want, right now in their lives, to live in single-family houses. I mean, some of them do, but a lot of them want that urban living. They want to live downtown, and they are looking for this type of higher-end apartment building to live close to places where they work. And I agree with the businesses that it's going to do a lot to help the businesses on Brand to have this housing there. And let me just say that my favorite place, which is on Wilson, is one of the finest restaurants in Glendale, and if you haven't been there, I know this is a little off-topic, but if you haven't been there, you should go there, because it is really a special place. And I, when this building opens, they're probably going to have to expand. So I want to thank all of the businesses for coming in and for their support, and I do support the project.
Okay, next, Mr. Manukian.
I will support the project as well. If I had my preference, as Councilmember Friedman said, I would prefer to have a park there as well, but having the property in private hands and considering our financial situation, the city's financial situation right now, I don't think it's doable. Besides, there's got to be a willing seller for us to purchase it at this point, so. I'm glad that the project is coming in as was presented the first time. Glad that you're not coming in asking for additional density, additional heights, because for whatever reason. I thought that initially the design was original, and I still do think so. I think it will add to the mid-brand over there, in terms of foot traffic for the mid-brand area, which we have contemplated and wished for a number of years. And so I will, I think it's a great project. I'm glad that there are no, there's nothing given by the city to the developer. You're doing it all on your own. There are no variances, no money from the city involved, and that is certainly a plus. So I would support the project.
Mr. Weaver, or?
I'm okay with the project. There were some issues with the hues and the tints on the building last time. I think I'm more than satisfied with this design, so.
Well, I like the architectural design of it. It's quite unique, and it's beautiful. However, as the Holland Partners know with them a few times, and I've been very consistent, like on stage one, I will not support this. When we laid out downtown the space, this lot was zoned for 19 stories, with the thought by council that we needed a first-class hotel in this city. It's the only spot left that can do that, only one left. And people I talk to in the business community of this city say we need a first-class hotel in this city. It doesn't go here, it doesn't come to Glendale. So with the knowledge that it was on that, and I've been consistent in that, I have to vote no. It's going to pass four to one, and I hope I still get invited to the Yard House or Houston's or whatever, when it comes in there. We're missing a golden chance. I know we're, can't wait around, but I've learned in my later years to be patient. Things come around. Hotel market will turn, the hotel tax revenue come in, we get a lot of, a lot of business coming in that hotel that would serve downtown Glendale. What? Anything that happens? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I sup-
Okay, I support the project. I like the innovative design. I have to speak a little louder, there's people outside. I think, yeah, I like the design a lot, the different colors, and I think it's going to work really well. And we absolutely need the downtown housing so that all the businesses there at mid-brand will get some more business, especially in the sort of evenings and weekends. In terms of hotels, we have one going in at the corner of Central and Wilson. It won't be a five-star, but I think it's going to be a business-class hotel that's going to serve Glendale quite well. And then a potential, there'll be another one across the street from the Americana at Colorado, which will be an all-sweets hotel. So that should improve the TOT coming into the city, transit occupancy tax. So I'm glad we're moving forward, and hopefully we'll get it built soon, and the different business people and entrepreneurs there on Brand will have a new, a new group of clients for their business. Do I have a motion?
For both items. Second. He's moving both items. Roll call.
A and B.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Menuchyan.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
No.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much. We'll move to the GWP issue.
At item two, interim General Manager of GWP and Director of Administrative Services Finance regarding report on water revenue bonds and electric revenue refunding bonds. At 2A is a motion authorizing execution of a professional services agreement with Public Financial Management, Inc., to act as GWP's financial advisor in the not-to-exceed amount of $130,000. At 2B is a motion authorizing execution of professional services agreement with Fulbright and Jaworski LLP to act as GWP's bond counsel and disclosure counsel in the not-to-exceed amount of $206,500.
Mr. Ochoa.
Yes, sir. What we have before you is a continuation of a discussion that began earlier this year with respect to the water side of the House at GWP. The council, as Mr. Zurn will tell you in a second, has or had at that point voted to restructure the rates and the rate itself, the way it was structured, to ensure some elasticity in the revenue projections that would allow for a capital campaign to really focus less on our reservoirs and capacity side of the infrastructure and more towards the distribution side of the infrastructure. That is what was explained to stakeholders and ratepayers this spring. And what we have before you, as I say, is the ongoing nature of that discussion to finance the bulk of the improvements in the foreseeable future. So with that, Mr. Zurn will take you through the first part of this discussion, and Mr. Elliott will talk about the financial firms that we're looking at retaining.
Thank you. I do have a question before we even start. If we haven't actually decided as a council whether we are going to move forward with the bonding, why are we looking for a council and so forth? I mean, will this money be spent before the vote is taken, or this is just approved?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, tonight you would give us, you would approve those contracts and give us the approval to move forward. We would still need to come back to you on at least one occasion, Mr. Elliott probably knows better, but tonight, if it isn't your wish to do that, then it ends right here. But otherwise, we're looking for your approval to move forward, and with that, to approve these two contracts so that we can have the financial and legal assistance we need.
Okay, so we won't spend the money in the event?
But also, this is also to look into refinancing our existing bonds, correct?
Correct.
Because we believe that we can save quite a lot of money by doing that.
Correct. And Mr. Elliott will talk a little bit about that. But this, there's two components to this. The main component, as Mr. Ochoa indicated, is the issuance of a new water bond, if you will. The second part of it, in which is consistent with the direction we received from you this past budget year, which was to look at current debt and how we could restructure that, taking advantage of the current economic market and seeing if we could, we could save there. So yes, again, Mr. Elliott will go into a little bit more detail, but there is an advantage for us to, right now with the market, to realize some savings.
So number two on the report, that's actually the refi, the $206,000.
Yes, sir.
And then one is?
Correct.
Okay.
So just by way of a quick recap, as Mr. Ochoa said, on March 27th, 2012, this past year, council approved the water rates, which included a water rate restructuring, a restructuring of the whole rate component. And that included an allowance for debt service, looking forward to the possibility of issuing a bond. The financial situation of the Water Department, as you know, is quite dire at this time. We're on our way back, and we will bring that back. But as part of our budget adoption this year, we had to cease our capital improvement program, and it was placed on hold as part of that budget process. That allowed us, especially with the management transition that's taken place, the opportunity to get together, look at what was really the most, the highest priority for our water projects, and feel real comfortable about what we were going forward with, what we could accomplish in a relatively short period of time. With that done, we have come up with that. Mr. Ochoa alluded to the fact that we're concentrating on what I call the backbone of the system, which is primarily the distribution system. These are the pipes and valves that are in the ground that bring the water from our source to, all the way up to the residents and the businesses who are our customers. We've had, we have a lot of old pipe in the ground. We've had more incidents and issues with valves and pipe, and I think it just makes a lot of sense for us to address that particular component of the capital program, and that's primarily where the proceeds from this bond would be used if approved. Restarting the program, as we've said, takes an infusion of cash, which is the issuance of these bonds, and certainly now is a great opportunity to take advantage of historic low rates in the market. Again, Mr. Elliott will go through that. And then, as Ms. Friedman brought up, refinancing the electrical debt is consistent with our goals of this past budget year, and that is also the second component of this.
And just to interdict there, just to make a clarification on the motions that are we're asking for. One is for financial advisor, one is for bond counsel and disclosure counsel. Both of those two parties are essential to any financing structure. So we're asking to retain two firms, but we would be looking at two different transactions, a water bond and the refi of the electrical bond.
I think they should be separated and not together.
Well, it's the council's, certainly the council's pleasure.
With that, next slide. Just a rough timeline of how we see this laying out, again, going back to when the water rates were approved with the debt issue as part of that financial plan. Budget approved this past June, being effective on July 1st. We look at today, today's council action, anticipating if there is approval, to retain bond counsel and financial advisor, and we would go forward with the work that needs to be done and look at bonds being issued November, December of this year, with capital work, using the proceeds of that bond to begin as quickly as we can next year, mid to late January. And then the electric debt financing would commence at that point. And again, Mr. Elliott will give you some details, but the idea is, is that we issue the water bonds, go through that process, get the debt, begin the capital program, and then look at the electric debt refinance. With that, let me have Mr. Elliott pick it up here and give you the financial details.
Thanks, Steve. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The chart we're showing you is kind of an important piece of this, and really it's just a historical reflection of where interest rates are. And each of those bars shows the spread over the last 30 years or so of the different interest ranges for applicable financings. And what we would look for is, if you focus on the far right of the chart, is 30-year, and two in from that to the left is a 20-year, which is approximately what the electrical refunding is. You can see in this area, that's the average of this range. This is the range that it's happened over the last 30 years. Here's the average. This is where rates are today on a AAA. And much like everybody knows and has experienced with your home mortgages, it's probably the best time in history to go out and borrow money for long-term projects. So this just is a comparison of the different rates. Showing it again in kind of a line chart over time, this is since '02. You can see a A-rated 20-year and a AAA rated, and there's obviously difference for different credit ratings. As you recall, GWP right now is A-plus, so we would be tending towards the red area here if we were to issue debt in the near future. Obviously, it goes up and down as time goes on, but clearly you can see the trend that we are, again, at historic lows. So if we move forward with a water rate financing, we're looking to issue a $35 million worth of principal. The average of the bonds would be 22-years, it'd be a 30-year issue, but the average rate, and these are, you know, guestimates at this point until you go out to market, these bonds, according to charter, are done competitively, and we can get into that if we need to. Bottom line is, we sell debt, folks would invest in it, and over time, we would pay off the $35 million.
And I think that's a point worth going back to. In terms of the competitive rate versus the negotiated transaction, we actually believe, and based on advice that we've received, that you could, if the charter allowed it, but it doesn't, you could get a considerably lower interest rate if you could negotiate the structure. But we're locked into competitive.
The, if we move forward with the water issue, this is kind of a perspective of the debt service coverage ratio. This is an important metric that any debt issuance has as a benchmark in what your debt service coverage ratio is. And you can see, in the past, we had a much higher debt service coverage ratio. Obviously, with our financial condition, it's dropped, but it's still at 1.3, which is still relatively strong. Typically, a good benchmark is 1.25. And with the rate increases that you have passed and put in place, that debt service coverage ratio would increase as time goes on. So it's, even though there's difficulties within the water fund in terms of cash, there's still a solid financial basis at this point in time, and the coverage ratio is still good enough to go to market. How would this look in total? This is kind of an overlay on a bar chart of what the debt service would be. The existing new interest component is the blue portion, and as we move into later years, obviously, the interest becomes less and the principal payoff becomes more out into the 30-year range as you move forward. So as Steve mentioned, and his staff is here to answer questions, you've seen these before. Originally, as we discussed during the budget presentation, the, some of the critical projects that the Water Fund was looking to do was about $45 million. They've trimmed it, trimmed it down to those real core projects of $35 million and listed out here, and we can certainly go into any detail if you have on that. Obviously, not the technical expert on the projects, but this is the listing we came up with for the $35 million. Obviously, the, some of the pictures, you've probably seen these in the past, of what those would be, as Steve said, the bread and butter of the system, pipes and valves in the street, and that's pretty much what it would be. You've seen this, it's been presented in the past, a tuberculated pipe and basically equivalent of a clogged artery, and that's why they need to be replaced as we move forward. A lot of the pipe is very, very old, circa 1940 and perhaps even older.
I think the best indication of the issues that we have with respect to distribution is encapsulated by the valve rupture we had at, I think it was Monterey and Glendale Avenue, just a few months ago. As we started to replace that valve, which was leaking, the more, because all the pipes around it were so old, the more we tried to cut away, the more that would break. We need to be replacing that distribution system.
The second issue before you is a refunding of the '03 electric bonds. Just like anybody would refund their mortgage, we have an opportunity to lower our interest rate and actually reduce our principal costs. It can be, it can be done a number of ways. What we are looking at is having approximately $3 million savings and take that in the first three years, thereby generating quite a bit of savings, about $1 million a year for the next three years for the electric utility. And that's important as we try and face some of the challenges we have in cost-cutting in the utility. So I think this is a very good opportunity to refund those bonds. Again, just no different than as if you refunded your home mortgage at a lower interest rate. So moving forward, as Scott mentioned earlier, it's a very key component to have both bond counsel and a financial advisor on the city's behalf, looking at the documents that are prepared and the structures of the debt, how you layer the different principal amounts, so on and so forth. Staff went out to bid, issued an RFP for these services. The results are in your staff report. The ultimate decision was to select Public Financial Management, PFM, and Fulbright and Jaworski as bond counsel. So the, what staff recommends is we move forward with issuing a water bond and an electric refunding bond. And with that, we can answer any questions you may have.
Questions or comments? Okay. All right, well, I'd like to move the, I'd like to break off the funding. I am, yeah, I am in support of the refinancing, but I'm not in support of new bonding for water and power. Mentioned it in the past. So who wants to?
I'll move to A. Do you want that first?
If I may, it sounds like you want to break up the approval of the financial advisor and the council for electric refunding bonds and the water revenue, so.
2B.
Now, you'd have to break them up, so you'd have to break up, I'm sorry, I don't have the agenda I'm looking at. Can I borrow your agenda real quick?
2A and 2B.
I'll move a motion authorizing execution of professional services agreement for the refinancing of our current bonds, for whatever the amount.
For electric, and so the breakdown would be for PFM, it would be $65,000, and for Fulbright, it would be $100,500.
Hey, do I have a second on that?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Menuchyan.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Mayor Quintero.
No.
Okay, does that take care of the agenda items?
Will we adjourn for the City Council?
Second.
We are adjourned.